How long you have to wear that?
I'll find out tomorrow. But I'm guessing, I'm guessing for somewhere around nine months, put it on change of arms.
Did you let your wife enter any clothes or what?
No, I left something on. Everybody ready to call me in the order here to pile three, four? And we'll get through and ask everybody. Turn your cell phones and stuff off for my very please. And I've asked Mike Rali, people do this every day.
Please pray with me, please. Our most gracious and loving, devoted Father, we thank you for the day. Thank you for the blessings of the day, Father. Father, we thank you for keeping us, loving us, watching over us every day. Father, this time we ask you to be with the city members of the city council, representing us now, Father, not through the next year. We have the wisdom to be able to make the decisions that we make in a wise manner, in an appropriate manner, and in expedient manner, Father. Father, we need encouragement, we need strength, we need help every day. Just asking you to continue to watch over us in that as a special way. Be with those who are affected by this disease, Father. Be with the families of those that have lost loved ones through the pandemic. Father, just comfort them in the way that you know how. Watch over us, Father, and keep us in your tender loving care for all these things Christ will hold in mind. We'll take the U.S. flag first. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Our Texas flag, which honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the city and to this one state, indivisible, one state under God.
Note to all the council members present, Mayor Seymour is going to actually be here tonight due to some personal issues. So we will continue, I will do the best I can. Because this is my first time conducting meetings. At this time, we'll have the public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council, dialogue, deliberation, and discussion with the council members on items that are not, on their agenda is prohibited by law. Time for each speaker is limited to five minutes. Are they wishing to speak about anything? Okay, we will move on to the business. Four point one, the city council may consider, discuss, and approve an ordinance calling a general and special election to be held on November third, 2020, for the purpose of electing city council members for place three and place four, and a special election for the purpose of electing a city council member for place one to fill a vacancy for the one-year remainder of the unexpired term of office. Any discussions or... Do I hear a motion then if we...
I entertain a motion that we approve the ordinance calling a general election, special election to be held on November the third, 2020, for the purpose of electing city council member for place three and place four, and a special election for the purpose of electing a city council member for place one to fill a vacancy for the one-year remainder of the unexpired term of office. Second.
No, the second. All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now at four point two, the city council may discuss and consider taking action to terminate engineering services with OJD engineers and authorize staff to begin procurement for a new engineering firm related to the 2019 CDVG street grant. Any more comments?
Oh, fifteen city members. We've, staff has undertaken some investigation and looking into situations surrounding this grant project and found that there to be an issue with, number one, the way that it was awarded and the lack of communication between the engineer and the city. And so after reaching out, speaking with a representative of OJD and then legal counsel as well as our grant advisor, all parties kind of came together and what they decided to be best is for us to separate from OJD and to go ahead and relit the qualifications again and get started with another firm and get this thing done.
Is this a 2500 administrative cancellation?
No, sir, that's over our product. They've actually, they've completed a very small amount of work and they have that documented labor into the project, which is, we should be much further along in this project than we are.
Is it work that we can still utilize?
Yes, sir. We can utilize it, I've got a feeling that whoever comes in behind him is going to want to verify, trust us, verify the work because they're going to have to end up being the one that puts their stamp on it. And so I certainly can understand and appreciate that. Staff has looked at this, well, basically, since they have walked in the office. And we've been trying to get this wrapped up and so we can move on.
And we have just a small synopsis for the benefit of everybody of what the CDVG street grant entail.
There was a map that was drafted of a particular portion of the city where the streets had, are in worse shape than others, I should say. And in that area, we will be replacing water mains and some other infrastructure while we have the asphalt up. The problem is also, some of the scope was not to the liking of a lot of people that I talked to. And that's something that's going to need to be addressed as well because one good rain, the way that the swimming water flowed here in the city, that ready work would be gone and unheard. And so we're needing to slow down, take a look at, still moving ahead as quickly as we can and just peel what we can. And while we peel, we'll go in with the infrastructure, get those mains and lines replaced and updated. And then we come in, we're still working on getting the interlokal with the county that's part of our end time, which is part of the grant that we said we rented it. And so all the, all the, a lot of the pieces of the puzzle should have been worked away that were originally, but we just need to get, we need to get here.
When the, when Matt, when the lady from the Department of Public Health came, she wanted to see the streets that were traveled a lot and were torn up. She was taking over on Second Street and Broad and Third, Fifth Street and all back through there. And she took pictures and everything and went back. And that's what they used in order to determine what we were getting for the grant. And that area is probably where we're going to have to stay in order to get the grant to do the overlay of the roads, that of the mains and stuff.
Exactly. And the other part of this is, is that if we don't get here and get this thing done, I'm possibly going to be forced to de-obligate. And we don't want to do that. Because the likely that it being selected again the next grant year, which is about to open up in about six to eight weeks, we may not be successful since we were awarded and de-obligated and didn't have to come back. It would be a whole nother grant cycle where we probably would be successful. And so I've made some really lengthy, late night conversations with grant administrator. Feels that we can still pull this off and encumber the funds and the timeframe set forth by TD8 to get this thing done before December 1st of 21.
Have we got seventy thousand dollars in grant?
Two hundred and seventy-four thousand.
Yes, sir.
Has it only included the engineering, being able to locate all the lines, the veins in a more accurate fashion?
Most of that work's already been done. And that's one thing that, that's part of that comprehensive community planning project that was done previously. So all these infrastructure places are already documented, so we know where we're going. But then with the new one that we're applying for, for the new comprehensive plan, we'll update anything that we do now where we have abandoned lines and moved that all documented at that time. Right? Yes, sir.
Any other discussion, questions? Do I hear a motion that we terminate this contract with OJD engineering?
I want to make a motion, terminate the contract with OJD engineers. That's second.
Excuse me. Do we have a part of the second? The motion here, if you say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay. So out of four point three, the city council will meet in budget workshop for the 2020-21 fiscal year budget. This time on the city manager.
Thanks, sir. I'm going to turn it over to John here. John's our financial director and John's been spending the last several days working tirelessly to put together the information for his night. And then once we get through going through these, as I mentioned, this is a simple workshop. So we'll work on this and we'll talk about some of the projected sales tax revenues. We'll talk about what we're looking at as far as no new debt, no new revenue rates. And where we would have to go in order to reach the voter required or what you should call a rollback rate. But I'll turn it over to John, Director.
Nice to meet both of you, I've got a couple of you, but I'm John. Appreciate the opportunity to...
Don't speak your full name, please, John, so everybody...
John here, the third. And so I appreciate the opportunity to serve the city and I can do so diligently. I'm going to jump right into it. That first page which you're looking at is kind of the summary of everything that's going to follow. I tried to organize it to some degree. Each steps, quick page is going to be in the order underneath the department heading. So if you want to look for a quick reference of how to get back and work this one down. But what it does is it breaks down in that top left corner essentially what the fiscal year 2020 was for the budgets for those departments, what our proposed 2021 budgets are. And if you see it inside the parentheses, that means it's an increased burden to us. So for example, the police department increases by forty-one dollars, five hundred this year. We've been current proposal that we have in place. So jumping over, if you want to flip to that first page is the first segue about how that first page works. You'll see in orange is the new line items that currently exist to cover deficiencies or to expedite the way that we build everything out to budget throughout the year. The first column is going to be your nineteen-twenty fiscal year twenty budget, current year-to-date expenses, and this is going to be not current actual date, but through the end of July. And it breaks down on the average cost per month. And then I use that to project an end of year for the fiscal year twenty. And I use that number to determine both off of what was requested by the department head and by what our past utilization through the last ten months of the fiscal year was to try and figure out that twenty dash twenty-one, so which would be our quiet twenty-one line items. And I work with the department heads. Some of them I work a little more extensively with others, but I have had a communication with almost everyone of them. So we've gone back and forth. And this first one is probably pretty close, but it's, the year's not over yet. Just keep in mind that it's a living breathing body that can change if we're in a workshop. So the key differences, I don't know if you want to highlight in police department, exactly what the differences are.
We can, it's just up to you.
How would you guys like proceed, I mean, department by department or just like a roughly breakdown? I've tried to make it as self-explanatory as possible. The biggest difference that you're going to see that I'll hit that I know that departments are here first and then I'll get back to Sam. In non-departmental administration, if you flip over to that, should be the oh oh one dash three thousand. And you'll see that I have a whole bunch of it right there. So what you're seeing in that kind of peach yellow color would be drawn down on the left side with the arrow. What I did there was broke down into that little subsection was how those were impacted by being financial changes based on staffing. So when you compare and take out just those changes based on staffing just over the last couple of months, the hardcore aspects of the budget only changed by about thirty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Overall, the budget for the non-departmental administration, which is the different positions that you see, the city administrator, myself, code enforcement, the position available for public works director, then the expenses that associate with our departments would increase by about two hundred and nine dollars in this proposal. And again, about a hundred and seventy-five thousand, that's just changes based on staffing changes that needs to support those staff and ensure it's required and such. One thing you'll see a change there is the way that IT is broken down. We're going to shift some of the responsibility from being a full-time IT person to a shared position between the co of the full-time office and making it a shared IT department. And the IT management, which would be a new line, would take care of the costs associated with a third-party vendor that would handle some of our IT solutions. And they utilize that IT technician as a part-time person, it's a shared responsibility for the onsite aides instead of having to pay for trip calls and such that cost more than what we would expect. The next one that has a huge difference is the streets and sanitary. And I kind of want to touch on it is how we want to keep the elephant in the room. In the past, we haven't had much attention paid to the increases in the contract waste hauling costs. And I don't think we've had a huge on the revenue side of that increase over the past few years to cover the statutory increases that are in that contract for the waste hauling costs. So instead of being able to just take straight across and apply a three percent increase to the budget for the year, I think it would be more prudent for all of us to project how much the past actual cost had been. It does drive off the budget for that, but we do recoup that through revenue. But it allows us in a predictive manner to be more prepared throughout the year for what those actual costs are without being blindsided every month inside this room and outside this room. And I think it's just more prudent on behalf of the taxpayer for us to take that approach to make up the difference that we haven't made up for at this point and to be more transparent. I have had a few flip back to that part, if you don't have questions on any of that. You'll see the lines that don't have parentheses around them. Streetlights, fire department, streets maintenance, parks, pool, community center, administration, sewer and air at the airport. We've been able to take some of the over-budgeted lines and trim them to make them more appropriate to what the past utilizations have been. And overall, you'll see in the totals section, when you compare what we are predicting fiscal year 2021 could be, it comes up to a difference of about five hundred and six thousand dollars. If you take and you balance that against what we predict for fiscal year 2021 just on the sales tax, we're predicting a slight decrease potentially for the sales tax revenue for fiscal year 2021 just based on the trends that we see when we look back over the, up to, what was it, nineteen?
Yes. Oh nine.
Oh nine.
Yep.
So it's about every fourth or fifth year, there's a decrease in the revenues and then it increases every year after that. I don't have a full breakdown going back a decade. But when we take in the average in, we predict a one point one-six million dollar sales tax revenue. So that number off to the right where the yellow highlighted, that's why twenty-one increases would be essentially what our excess of sales tax, even having an increase in the budget, theoretically should be. I'm the trash, are you increasing it by what we spent to date? It's what we spent to date and then a little bit more for the predicting of the three percent increase. So if you get back to that. So what that calculated was that six oh four, eight twenty-eight is what the projected end of year fiscal year twenty will be. To date, we are at five oh four, oh two four. If I take that and average it across ten months and then I get that fifty thousand, four hundred two, which is our average cost per month. So if I take that and carry it times twelve months for the full fiscal year, I get that six oh four, eight twenty-eight for a projected total year cost.
I think you're going to have too much money in there. Because we were kicking up this year from the past when we were behind going all the way down.
Okay. Well, that's definitely one we can work on. My apologies, it's Tuesday, it's a long night. I spent a whole lot of numbers. I hope it looks like it did something. But I, that's why you're here. So yeah, we can whittle that one down a bit, I assume. Do you have any rough idea of what we would project towards the end of the year?
We may have one more forty-eight thousand.
Okay.
But still, this has got maybe two or three months that we were behind.
Which is about twelve thousand a month, sir. Four thousand.
So ninety-six thousand, so we're, so if we took just that straight, rounded it to a hundred and that's another hundred, so that's just four hundred over, which is, which is better.
Basically, we got way behind and we've been having to catch up. It's always been the case. We should be able to have a positive revenue from the trash, try to check out rather than the negative.
Okay.
We've had some problems in that area. Obviously, we're beginning to catch up now. We should always have a positive capital in revenue from our trash.
Yeah, the way that it's tracked right now and build out, I don't know that's the most efficient way we could be doing it with a little notebook. Nothing on the way that any city person has handled it to date. I just don't know that it garners the amount of transparency that we are obligated to give the citizen.
Right. And that's what we understand, I mean, we know we've been caught in the problem of crisis.
But that's what we're here for.
Yep.
That's what, yeah, you got her.
So without going through line by line, department by department, unless you even want me to, is there questions on us that I can field out my methodology? What do you like, what don't you like?
Fuck, I've got nine months, we're not doing that anymore. It's been ripped up.
Yes.
I think myself, it's just going to take a little bit of time now for us to look at all this individually, kind of absorb what he's got to tell us here. I'm thinking that it's looking very good. But there's always some questions we may have after you look at it. Like I said, the one we got last time, I looked at it pretty hard, had quite a few questions. But we've got a lot of natural here.
Yes, sir.
But we just need an opportunity to have another workshop, possibly.
Well, what I would like to do is the next meeting, which will be our regular meeting, is that we can go ahead and take care of any regular business and then we can go ahead and talk about workshop, you know, if you have any questions you bring to us in between now and then. And then we can work on that and get this looked at again, give it another look. And then be able to present to you a proposed budget. And then we'll work on the guidelines, ours coming here and then the possible docking of the proposed budget after you've had an opportunity to scrutinize it. Then that way we can go ahead and start looking at the timelines for docking our, our next pension or our tax rate. Does it have to be done separately from one another?
Yes. We don't have to have a hearing. Anybody have any further questions?
Anybody got any questions about the, I was contacting someone over at the visit of the office, who was able to provide us with our, our tax number. Right now, as it says, our no new revenue rate is set at point five two one three nine seven percent.
Percent?
It's point five two one three nine seven. And that would generate nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and four cents. Figuring in ninety-seven percent collection rate, if it drops considerably, then you figure back in the frozen rate and that would have us generating approximately one million, sixty-two thousand, four hundred and four dollars and seventy-seven cents. And I said, that's a no new revenue rate. That's just picking up business and going off. Our voter approved rate would be where did it go? Point five five zero nine three seven. So anything below that would avoid the rollback collections or call it for voter approval. And so what I did is I started playing with numbers. They also throw in this year for the first time, a diminish rate. Where an entity is allowed the opportunity to collect in the neighborhood of about five hundred thousand for infrastructure, equipment, other one-time type deals. However, the diminish rate figures out for us at one dollar and one penny. And there's no way I'm going to go for a dollar on skating, there is just no way. And so what I started doing is I started looking at the numbers and breaking it down to evens. And so I broke it down into fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five. And to go to the fifty-three, we would see an addition of fifteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars in revenue. If you went to fifty-four, you estimated, increased the revenue. If you went to fifty-four, you estimated increase of revenues would be in the ballpark of thirty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And if you went to fifty-five cents, the increase to the city would be fifty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-four cents. So that's why we're scrutinizing and we're scrubbing this document over and over again. We're gonna do everything in our power to just try and stay at the non-new revenue rate if we possibly can. However, if we're seeing things in order to build up our reserves a little bit at a time, I'm looking between the fifty-three and fifty-four. I don't want it at fifty-five. Our revenue is not altogether there. But right now, this is all subject to change for work ends. This is all fluid right now. But I thought that it'd be prudent to tell everyone where we're at, what we're looking at and that we're not just throwing a bunch of numbers together and just strapping that tax rate. We're, we're scrubbing really hard and trying to make sure things done right.
And at the fifty-four, you're setting out for thirty-three?
Thirty-three, four eighty-eight.
Thirty-three.
Four eighty-eight.
Four eighty-eight.
Yes, sir.
That would help our reserves considerably.
Yes, sir. Best practices are that any government should have somewhere in the neighborhood of three, at least three months operating expenses in reserve. And so we're trying to get to that point where we can start seeding that and getting those reserves built up is just gonna take us a little bit of time.
And that would also improve our moving rate.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments?
As far as like the sanitation, what Republic and stuff, does it show how much like we're collecting on that?
No, I haven't balanced the actual revenue so far. I did on that front page, it accounts for all revenues in a blanket form. But no, it hasn't. I know when we looked at it on Thursday, we were, I think we projected through the end of the year and others was taking any amount of money that we're catching up. But that's the deficit collection versus expense of around seventy-two or seventy-five thousand. But if you look at the balance that against ninety-six thousand, that's actually a profit.
And I'm gonna reach out to Republic and get their feedback on this because I know the industry has changed a lot since I've been around it at all. But looking for a more proficient manner in which to make sure that they are tipping what they're tipping. We did some digging and I think we found also on the commercial side that we're building, but they're being tipped more than what we're building. And so that's just in one instance. And so we're needing to try and look into this a little bit to make sure that we're getting what we're supposed to be getting. There's some human error in there, not, I think it's not anybody in this building from what I'm getting what I see so far.
In fact, we discovered that before. We've not been getting the billing right because they were-
Well, in this instance, I think even one of the commercial vendors, the commercial customers that we spoke with felt like the numbers weren't adding up right, but they know the trucks are coming in more and the whole bills, not buckets and some other areas. And so it just, it just warns us, you know, trust is verified as what we're doing. We're gonna take the information that we're getting and we're gonna be verifying that we're going for appropriate levels. So as for us, I think that's all we know for the workshops. If you have some other questions or anything else that you would like for us to bring for you at the next workshop. This is a start.
This is awesome.
I'm still learning.
For real.
So are you at all? But yeah, I think this is a pretty comprehensive report for us.
Sorry.
You were talking about him last week. Actually, you know who you are. You got the gunshot about it. I don't get it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sorry to land in Reynolds County.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Now that we have, each have a copy, we can go back and take your favorites and [inaudible]. And if you have anything, bring it to them during the week.
Please.
Look at it and run it through their scrubbing system. Then we can go next meeting, next Monday, at five thirty.
Same time.
Yeah, next council meeting. He can bring us a new report.
I'm off to recover it at the head. I did work in there with all of the department heads that proposed different salary rates. We tried to take what their goals for twenty-one were and increase them. So that's why we were scrutinizing the other lineups to make sure we were efficient on them. So we are trying to make an effort to increase what our pool available for salaries is to every employee regardless of department. And so that we can give [inaudible] pay appropriately and everything. So I mean, there are, I think in a lot of the departments, like there were some significant expenses that we tried to balance out in police department, animal control, and starting to predict for the next three years and by increasing budgets on building capacity of appropriate equipment that only, not only increases safety, but increases efficiency.
I didn't really pick up on this, but the thought came from a line in. Are we allowing for the fact that we're probably gonna have to hire some additional employees because some of them are going to other jobs?
So I did take that into consideration because that formula that we developed specifically for this set of spreadsheets, it's not discriminant to what the 2020 budget was. It solely looks at what we used so far and projects out. So a lot of the ones where you don't see a decimal point on that value, it's ones where I used my discretion to go in and override what the formula suggested the budget for that line. And so it's not straight formulary on everything. So I did try to take into consideration what we need as far as employees in each one of those departments based on what we're budgeted for and then increasing so that when we get back to full employee capacity, they're not left with a deficit that they feel in their pocketbooks. So I had to take that into consideration.
I wanna be sure we don't have a deficit we feel in our city.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody have anything else? Well, I guess I wouldn't maintain a motion to adjourn.
I can make that motion if we deserve it.
Yes. And if there are some favors, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.